All right, good evening, East Hampton Town Board. We're broadcasting live on Channel 22, streaming to YouTube. You're being recorded. Phone lines are open, and you may begin your meeting.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Meeting of Thursday, January 16th, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
President.
Councillor Lees.
Present.
Councillor Rogers.
Present.
Councillor Member Colvin Pima.
Present.
Supervisor Bart Gonzalez.
Present.
If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
All allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have three public hearings. That'll be followed by public portion and then resolutions. We ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes. And we have Hugh King here with us tonight.
Well, I have an announcement. Last Thursday, there was a wonderful birthday party down at the Senior Citizen Center for probably have to be the two oldest citizens in our town, Josephine Kraske and Mary Curles. The staff down at the Senior Center did a wonderful job. They got presents, they had their pictures taken, and of course, they had a special meal. Well, and that proclamation that your assistant put together was really well done.
Thank you.
Madam Supervisor, and it was really well read. And I don't know who the name of the woman who--
That was Diane Petrizio, the Human Services Director that read it. I guess you don't like to tell a woman's age because you haven't mentioned how old these ladies turned.
Oh, well, let's see. They're not 100?
No.
They're not 99?
No.
They're 101.
Yeah.
Can you believe it? So what I did is I said, well, what was it like in 1923 and 1924 when they were born? Well, the school in Amagansett in 1923 was on the corner of Atlantic Avenue and Montauk Highway, where the tennis courts are. And Mrs. Kraske and Mrs. Curles went to that school. Okay, I think they are the only two remaining people alive who went to that school. I'm probably going to be found out to be wrong. And then in 1936, when the present Amagansett School was built, they went there. Okay? In 1923, Mein Coma Hall was owned by the Lady Society of Busy Workers. And if you wanted to have a party, you wanted to have a dance, you wanted to have a theater event, you rented Mein Coma Hall. There was no Guild Hall until 1931. Isadora Duncan rented Mein Coma Hall one summer. Okay? The 1881 Amagansett Life Saving Station that was on the corner of Bluff Road and Indian Wells had been moved up to Main Street, but it had not become La Carrouba Store yet. That didn't happen till 1932. The post office in Amagansett was in the Conklin and Hand Store, which is the building right next door to the Amagansett Library. And then the post office later on was there before it got moved down to Montauk Highway. The fire department house in 1923 was where the parking lot is at the Amagansett School. The present firehouse wasn't built in 1942. The Amagansett windmill was still standing on--
Windmill.
Windmill Lane, right. It burned down about 1925. The Tisuno, Delipola, Napolillo, and Natal families had arrived in Amagansett. The second Amagansett train station was still standing. The first one burned down. And when they built the second one, Ira Baker, the station manager, said, I'm not going to, I'm not going to come and be the station manager. He lived in Hampton Bay, unless you put an apartment in. So they put an apartment in, and he was there in 1942 in June when the Nazi saboteurs landed on the beach and then worked their way to the train station, waited for him to open up the next morning, and they took the train into the city. Miss Amelia from Miss Amelia's was still alive in 1924. The parish house or Scoville Hall was just being built in 1923-24. You ever hear of Stephen Talk House? Well, the Stephen Talk House was somebody's house, and it was David Barnes's house, and he was living in it in 1923. Guild Hall hadn't been built yet in 1923-24. Carl Fisher has just arrived in Montauk. The village of East Hampton had just bought Hook Windmill. Amagansett had a golf club being built in 1924. It's where the part of the present South Fork Country Club was, is. There were silent movies at the Edwards Theater. In 1923, the Edwards Theater was not on where it is, where it was. You remember where it was on Main Street? It burned down in the 60s. It was across the street. The high school was just being built on Newtown Lane. The 1894 school was broken up. Part of it went down the street and became Masonic Hall. It's now London Jewelers. And below--
Bowling Alley.
Bowling Alley, yes. Okay, London, yeah, okay. Now, one more. The village of East Hampton had just been formed in 1923, and the first leader of the village was called the president. Wasn't the mayor, he was called the president. And Jonathan Baker was the first president in the village. He was also the supervisor of East Hampton Town in 1880. Okay, that's all I got. See you next time.
Thank you. Thank you, Hugh. All right, Carol, if you could please read the first meeting notice.
The public hearings will be held live and in person by the Town Board and will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing and will be televised on local TV Channel 22 and available for live stream on the LTV website. The public shall be permitted to appear in person but may also provide comments on the matter being heard by calling 351-888-6331. Any person or party wishing to be heard with respect to the foregoing may do so in person, by agent, by attorney, or by call-in to the live stream, or by written comment addressed to the East Hampton Town Clerk, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton. Comments may also be submitted to the Town Clerk by email to cbrannan@ehamptonny.gov. All comments must be received by the Town Clerk by the date and time of the public hearing. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the Town's website for any changes and for updated information. Take notice that the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing pursuant to Chapter 232 Urban Renewal of the Town Code of the Town of East Hampton, Section 232-1-70, Modification of Urban Renewal Plans, in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on January 16th at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider the following modification of Urban Renewal Map, SP-6. It's Urban Renewal Map Number 18 and 20 in SP-6 to merge vacant UR Parcel Number 18 and developed UR Parcel Number 20 into one single UR Parcel Number 20A. Remove the access point for URP Number 18 from the map. New UR P Number 20A will take access from Roosevelt Avenue where driveway servicing UR P Number 20 currently exists. Except as mentioned above, the requirements for the UR Map SP-6 shall remain in full force and effect.
Thank you, Carol. We don't have anyone signed up over there? Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on this matter? Matt, Shawn? If you, if you want to, you have to come to the podium. Welcome, Shawn. If you could just state your name for the record.
Shawn McGee. We're just trying to combine the empty lot that we own next to our existing property with our current property where our house is.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, is there anyone on the line that wants to speak on this matter?
We have no callers on the line.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Carol, if you could please read the second meeting notice.
Take notice that the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 232 Urban Renewal of the Town Code of the Town of East Hampton, Section 232-170, Modification of Urban Renewal Plans, in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on July 16th at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider the following modification of Urban Renewal Map EH2A. Urban Renewal Map Number 60A and 60B in EH2A. From UR P 60A, consisting of approximately 1.1 acres, UR P 60B, consisting of approximately 1.3 acres, reserve area consisting of approximately .62 acres, to UR P 60A, consisting of 40,425 square feet or .92 acres. UR P 60B, consisting of 40,425 square feet or .928 acres, with a reserved area consisting of 26,945 square feet. Except as mentioned above, the requirements for UR Map EH2A shall remain in full force and effect.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? Welcome, if you could please state your name for the record.
Brian Locassio with the Adam Miller Group, a turner for the applicant. Thank you for having me. As a right, I was before you for this modification back in May of 2023. During the preliminary and final subdivision process, there were some minor changes to the map resulting in a slight tweak to create the open space requirement, which is now a standalone lot. There was also a minor clerical error in the prior resolution where it stated the total land was a little bit greater than it was. But in some extent, since you all have approved this map, there was a minor shift of the division line between the two buildable lots. And we're in the final approval process before the planning board, and this is just one of the conditions to clarify before we complete the subdivision.
Okay.
Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you all.
Matthew, is there anyone on the line for this hearing?
We have no callers on the line.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Carol, if you could read the third and last hearing notice, please.
Please take notice that pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York and the provisions of the East Hampton Town Code, the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on Thursday, January 16th at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard concerning the following grant of scenic and conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. The grantor is Martin and Michelle Cohen. It's a scenic and conservation easement dated November 27th, 2024, at 89 Marine Boulevard, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map 30176-8-5.3, and the reviewing agency is the ZBA.
Great, thank you, Carol. Anyone here would like to address the board on this matter? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers on the line.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, well, that wraps up our public hearings for this evening, so now we move on to public portion. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on any matter? Matthew?
We have no callers on the line.
Okay, so we can now move on to resolutions.
Thank you. We'll start with Resolution 2025-143. This is a warrant approval. We have claims of warrant number one being the amount of $933,719.88 for 2024 and $170,676,088 for 2025. Additionally, we have the amount of $60,882.53 for 2024 and $9,757.49 for 2025. We're audited by the Town Board and Supervisor is hereby directed to pay this name.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
144 is to appoint the Wildlife of Management Advisory Committee for 2025, members as listed below.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
2025-145, I'm thankful to the resolution to accept a donation from the Johann Peter family, who have donated a 77-inch Sony widescreen television to the East Hampton Town Senior Center. Resolve that the town thanks Carlos Scotto, Johann Peter, and Francisca Chagas, Johann Peter, for their generous donation.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
146 is to authorize agreement for Tyler Technologies. Be it resolved that Tyler Technologies is hereby retained for the calendar year 2025 to provide licensing and support services to support the town's finance, accounting, internal audit, human resources, and purchasing offices for the period of January 1st, 2025, through to December 31st, 2025, at a cost not to exceed $136,873.84.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
147 is to approve the New York Department of Transport Testing for Human Services. Be it resolved that Winstar Safety Service will provide mandated annual driving tests for senior transportation drivers at a cost of $150 per test. Be it resolved that Winter Safety Service will also provide behind-the-wheel tests and written tests for senior transportation drivers at a cost of $250 per test. And be it resolved that Meeting House Lane Medical Practice will provide mandated Department of Transport physical exams for drivers at a cost of $150.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
148 is to authorize grant application reimbursement for recycling center equipment. This is to provide a grant application to Department of Environmental Conservation, which offers a 50% reimbursement program for eligible capital projects. We would like to submit a application with our two payloaders and our grinder.
Great, second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I'm happy to offer Resolution 2025-149. This is a notice of public hearing to amend Chapter 246 Waterways and Boats to transfer the duties of the Town Clerk's Office to the Harbor Master of the Town of East Hampton. The public hearing will be held on February 6th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I'd like to offer Resolution 2025-150. This is a point 2025 Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee membership for the calendar year 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
151 is to set 2025 Compensation for part-time employee, lifeguard employee retroactive to January 1st, 2025. Christopher Chinkway, District Chief, Montauk, $35.36.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
2025-152 is accept a proposal for Dish Plains Comfort Station Upgrade Design. This is coming from L.K. McLean Associates for a proposal dated December 26, 2024, and not to exceed $42,600.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
153 is accept proposal for Atlantic Avenue Beach Comfort Station Upgrade and Design. Again, this is from a proposal from L.K. McLean Associates dated December 26, 2024, and the not to exceed $29,300.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
154 is authorize payment to S.L. Security Pros for invoice and service on December 2nd, 2024, in the amount of $335.90.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
155 is an authorize a payment to Rachel Feroni for, or say reimbursement for funds for programs that were not used by the family and verified.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
156 is asbestos and Lead Point Inspection at the Marine Museum. We received a proposal from Silver Wolf Environmental, and the above rates total not to be higher or used in excess of $3,340.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
157 is 2024 Budget Modifications for the Town's Fisheries Consultant. We're taking from full-time salaries in the amount of $500 to fisheries consultancy in the amount of $500.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
158 is amend budget account, Resolution 2025-30, for Sherry Miller, the pay the hourly rate of $23.80 retroactive to January 1st, 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
159 is amend hourly rates and status in Resolution 2025-29, that Vincent Florlenza and Michael Mears are hereby appointed to part-time Harbor Master one and hourly rate of $29.64 retroactive to January 1st, 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
2025-160 is amend the hourly rate in Resolution 2025-28, for Richard Hamilton. It's a part-time heavy equipment operator in the Highway Department, hourly rate of $30.09 retroactive to January 1st, 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
160 will honor is approve a payment for the South End Cemetery Fence Replacement to Ben Karpinski Builder in the amount of $20,418.38, and we generously want to thank the LVAS also for donating the amount of $22,305.54 to this project.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
162 is a payout upon retirement for Florence Stone, where she effectively retired from the Posing Grounds Department on December 26, 2024, and she had a, cured a vacation time balance of 212 hours and 88, 212.86 hours, sick and personal time balance of 664 hours and 20, 664 hours, .23 hours, and a cure compensatory time in the amount of 214.5 hours, and therefore now her total gross payout is $44,123.74 payable to Florence Stone. Congratulations, Florence.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 163, which is a notice of public hearing, and this is the Town Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 6th at 6:00 p.m. concerning the following grant of scenic conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. Grantor is 404 Old Montauk Highway LLC. The location is the same, 404 Old Montauk Highway in Montauk, Tax Route Number 300-22-01-04. The reviewing agency is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 164 is a notice of public hearing, and the Town Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 6th at 6:00 p.m. concerning the following grant of scenic and conservation easement to the town. This is Michael Ahello and Susan Ahello, 19 Fenwick Road and 13 Fenwick Avenue, Montauk, Tax Route Number 300-19-8-21 and 22.1. The reviewing agency is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 165 is to appoint an ARB, alternative member. Resolve be Clara Scaboni is hereby appointed to the Architectural Review Board as an alternate member for the calendar year expiring December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I am very happy to offer Resolution 166. This is a promotion and provisional appointment to Assistant Town Planning Director for Brian Frank, and this is resolved that Brian Frank be and is hereby promoted and appointed on a provisional basis to the full-time position of Assistant Town Planning Director at the hourly rate of $54.85, grade 34, off-step, which is $114,089.25 annually for a 40-hour work week, retroactive to January 7th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 167 is to retain outside counsel, and this is resolved that East Hampton requires the services of outside counsel for tax assessment matters for 2025. Resolve that, resolve that Peter D. Johnson, Attorney at Law, is retained to represent the town in connections with said matters. Resolve that payment to said counsel should be at the rate of $195 per hour plus cost in disbursements, including but not limited to title fees, court filing fees, and appraisal expenses not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 168, this is a notice of a public hearing, amending Chapter 225 of the East Hampton Town Code to add Article 9, exemption for East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue and Auxiliary Squad. A public hearing will be held at Town Hall, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on Thursday, February 6th, 2025, or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 169, notice of public hearing, local law to amend Chapter 255 of the East Hampton Town Code to amend Article 5, Special Permit Uses, Section 255-5-50, Specific Standards and Safeguards, Affordable Housing Development and Multiple Residents. Public hearing shall be held on February 6th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard at East Hampton Town Hall, 159 Panago Road.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 170, this is to increase hours for full-time employee Lynn Overton. Lynn Overton will be, will be increased to a 40-hour per week schedule with no change in hourly rate or budget account, effective retroactive to January 1st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 171, this is to increase hours for full-time employee Cheryl Farrell. Cheryl Farrell will increase to a 37.5-hour work schedule with no change in hourly rate or budget account, effective retroactive to January 1st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I'd like to make, make a motion to withdraw Resolution 2025-172.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 173, this is auction surplus, to auction surplus equipment for the Highway Department. A sale of surplus, of surplus Town Highway Department equipment as set forth in the attached list will be offered for sale by Auctions International at their website.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Resolution 174, this is to authorize expenditure installation of a concrete slab for an ADA chess table at Stephen Hands Path Ballfields. This is to--
The Honorable Fred Field.
Yes.
Preparational facility.
Thank you for correcting me. I should have, I should have added that myself. Thank you, Dave. This is to approve an expenditure of $3,150 to Long Island Mason and Concrete Corps.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 175 to pay past invoice, for past invoices for PSEG 20 Dorset Road. This is to approve the payment of $29.49 and $23.66 to PSG for service at 20 Dorset Road in East Hampton.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 176, this is to authorize surveyor for Cantwell Court subdivision. Suffolk County Water Authority requires that the lot line, frontages, and water meter locations be staked prior to the commencement of work at the Cantwell Court subdivision, and the Town Board does hereby approve hiring Gary Benz to perform the necessary survey work at the Cantwell Court subdivision for an amount not to exceed $3,200.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 177, this is the Community Housing Fund project funding for the Green at Gardeners Point. The Town Board hereby approves a grant in the amount of $1 million to the Green at Gardeners Point project, Georgia Creek Green Ventures, towards the cost of development on the, of the premises at 286 and 293 Mile Harbor Road.
Second.
Carol, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye. Nay.
Aye.
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 Resolution 178, this is Community Housing Fund project funding for East Hampton Housing Authority, Route 114, middle-income affordable housing. The Town Board does hereby approve, hereby approves a grant to the East Hampton Housing Authority in the amount of $1,500,000 toward the cost of engineering, design, and construction costs of middle-income affordable housing at 776 and 780 Route 114.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 179, Community Housing Fund project funding, Windmill 1, Affordable Senior Housing. The Town Board does hereby, hereby approves a loan in the amount of $338,000 to Windmill 1 towards the cost of development plans for the expansion of Windmill 1, 207 Akabonic Road.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 180, this is Community Housing Fund project funding, East Hampton Housing Authority, the cottages, 782 Route 114. The Town Board hereby approves a grant to the East Hampton Housing Authority in the amount of $500,000 for the acquisition of the premises at 782 Route 114.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 181, this is Community Housing Fund project funding for Whalebone Apartments. The Town Board hereby approves a grant to Whalebone Apartments, Whalebone HDFC, in the amount of $345,000 toward the cost of rehabilitation and improvements to housing units at 147 Boatheaders Lane.
Second with a roll call?
Yeah.
Nay. Aye.
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 Aye. Folks, we made history tonight, the first time we've given grants using the Community Housing Fund.
Yes, no, it's exciting, and I guess it's appropriate to thank the Community Housing Advisory Board, who I think worked very, very hard on this, the Housing Department, Dave, who was liaison before I got there, and for this Town Board, and everybody who came before to make it all happen, and the voters, who made the money available. Very exciting.
And the peanut butter and jelly.
That I'm not getting.
Resolution--
Oh, peanut butter and jelly.
You like peanut butter and jelly.
Resolution 182, this is to retain White, Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna LLP for tax guidance and ruling from 2025. Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna LLP shall be paid for the services of Scott Shimick at a rate of $495 per hour, with others in the firm being paid in accordance with their already established 2025 rates, not to, in a total not to exceed $80,000.
This was for reimbursement for uniform expenses for the Detective Division, and the original amount was $1,504.46, and the amended amount is $1,844. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
184 is to amend Resolution 2024-141, retain GEM Consulting, and this is to include GEM Consulting as a subcontractor to the Law Office of Vince Toomey with respect to expert witness testimony in an amount not to exceed $7,275, retroactive to September 13th, 2024. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
185 is to authorize police training for police officers Robert Lucas, James Geesa, and Patrick Royal for the ERD Ice Diver Certification, sponsored by the New York State Troopers, and that fee is $1,500. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
186 is an authorization for advances for authorized borrowing.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
187 is a blanket non-CPF appraisals and surveys for 2025. The Town Attorney is authorized to hire appraisers and surveys selected off the approved list maintained by the Department of Land Acquisition and Management in an amount not to exceed $15,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
188 is a blanket non-CPF appraisals for industrial park for 2025. The Town Attorney is authorized to hire appraisers for real property located within the industrial park in an amount not to exceed $7,500. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
189 is to increase the 2024 budget cap for flintstonography and transcript services, and this constitutes a total of $8,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
190 is to retain outside professional flintstonography and transcription for 2025 in an amount not to exceed $2,500. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
191 is to retain the Law Office of Picciano Scahill, PC, for the New Singular versus the Planning Board St. Peters lawsuit for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
192 is to retain the Law Office of Vincent Toomey for general matters for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
193 is to retain the Law Office of Vincent Toomey for PBA matters for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
194 is to retain Sokoloff Stern LLP as special counsel in Soto versus Tokolsky at all for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $20,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
195 is to retain Sokoloff Stern LLP as special counsel on Sunrise Tuttle for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
196 is to retain John C. Armatano Esquire and the Law Firm of Farrow Fritz, PC, in 117 BVA LLC versus the Town of East Hampton at all for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
197 is to, I have an amendment to the title, is to retain White Men, Ostermen, and Hanna LLP in the New York State DEC Sand Highway and Sea View at Amagansett for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Second is amended. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 198 is to retain Jasmine Schlesinger-Narandran LLP for the Maidstone God Club for 2025, in a sum not to exceed $15,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw Resolution 2025-199, as it is a duplicate. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 200 is to retain Jasmine Schlesinger-Narandran LLP and retain him as outside counsel in ZBA matters for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
201 is to retain Dan Rizzo and White Men, Ostermen, and Hanna LLP as outside environmental counsel for secret matters in 2025, in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
202 is to retain John C. Armatano Esquire and the Law Firm of Farrow Fritz for secret matters for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $15,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 203 is to retain outside counsel Jasmine Schlesinger-Narandran LLP in general matters for 2025, and I have, this is going to be as amended, if you look down at the financial impact, it should not exceed $25,000, and the budget line should be A 1420-54-520. Second. As amended. All in favor.
Aye.
204 is to hire Brian Lester Esquire as special prosecutor in 2025, I'm sorry, in 2025, at an hourly rate of $250, in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
205 is to approve police records training seminars. This is for Administrative Assistant Amanda Bennett, Associate Administrator Nicole Fasito, Account Clerk Bridgette McAuliffe, Senior Office Assistant Betsy Bono, and Office Assistant Carolina Chumby, and they're authorized to attend Managing New York Police Records Seminar, and this is in an amount not to exceed $1,557.20. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-206 is a payout upon retirement for Christopher Anderson, whereas in accordance with the East Hampton Town Police Benevolent Association Bargaining Unit and the policy of the Town of East Hampton, earned vacation, sick, and personal time are to be paid upon retirement from employment. And whereas Christopher Anderson has retired from his full-time position of police captain with the East Hampton Town Police Department, effective December 21st, 2024, and audited time records indicate that he has an accrued vacation time balance of 58 days, an accrued sick time balance of 180 days, and an accrued personal time balance of eight days. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Finance Office is authorized to issue a check through payroll from the appropriate payroll account for vacation time, sick time, personal time, at the daily rate of $853.33, for a gross total of $209,920.73 payable to Christopher Anderson as a final payout. I'd like to say, we wish to thank Captain Anderson for his distinguished 35-year career with the East Hampton Town Police Department. Chris began his career as a police officer on November 6, 1989, after attending the Suffolk County Police Academy, and quickly demonstrated his exceptional skills in both street-level policing and investigative work. His dedication and talent led to his assignment to the Suffolk County District Attorney's East End Drug Task Force, where he earned the 1998 Police Officer of the Year Award for his outstanding work in narcotics investigations. Chris was promoted through the ranks, becoming Detective Sergeant in 2001, Detective Lieutenant in 2010, and ultimately Captain in 2014, where he oversaw critical divisions of the department and served as executive officer, managing everything from training to personnel evaluations. He is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Seminar, and the Colonel Henry L. Williams Homicide Seminar. Chris's exceptional leadership skills set an example for others in law enforcement. His work has earned him numerous commendations, including Department Recognition and Chief's Recognition Awards, and he was involved in some of the most significant investigations in the department's history, including high-profile homicides and narcotic cases. After 35 years of exceptional service, we extend our deepest appreciation to Captain Christopher Anderson for his unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of East Hampton's residents. Second, and thank you, Captain Anderson.
Great.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 207 is to pay a NYMORE deductible for Richard Zeta, and this is in the amount of $5,870.87. Second. All in favor.